I'm Jerry Hester.
Oh, good.
Hey, Jerry.
All right, let's call the police order. Bobby, would you just let us know?
Yes, be glad to. Father in heaven, we're thankful for this day. We're thankful, Father, for all that we've worked, for all the time and every one of us. Father, we're thankful for the opportunity you give us to do the city's business. Father, we pray that everything that we do will be in accordance with our will and will allow us to have peace one way or another. Father, we continue to pray for the first responders here in our community and all over this country. Pray, Father, that you'll keep them safe, watch over them, and bring them home to their families at the earliest possible time. Pray, Father, for the same, um, same for our men and women. Pray for the very freedom to allow us to be here this evening. Father, we pray that you also watch over them, keep them safe, Father. Pray, Father, that you watch over us, forgive us when we fail the proud Christ's name. Amen.
Uh, something's making a noise. Somebody that ain't talking might need a mute or phone or something. It's gonna disturb us. No.
It could be a speakerphone, too.
Okay, well, that helped right there. Something's in the... All right, uh, uh, I hear a motion. We sent the minutes to the last meeting.
I make a motion.
You're a second on it?
I second it.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, ayes, guys. Artis, Dennis, and Scoot, checks. There, we're gonna give them to them in the morning as we come right here. And for the elementary school and high school, it's eleven thousand seventy-two dollars and eleven cents. And for the reserves, five thousand five hundred thirty-six dollars.
Okay.
So, we'll give them to them in the morning.
Haven't we been giving a little more tonight?
No, we, no. I think that lifetime is like eight thousand, eleven thousand now.
That's what I was thinking.
Business picking up.
Yeah, I thought so.
Uh, okay. Matt, you on there? Matt, I, okay, I'll turn it over to you. You wanna talk to him a minute? I wish somebody, something making a noise.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll be happy to, I'll be happy to, Mayor. Thank you for the, uh,
Yes, sir.
chance to address you and the council. I wanted to do a couple of things. One, I wanted to report back on you on our city court in light of the virus. We've done all of the things I told you about before our first, uh, court back in, um, back in June, uh, actually back in May. And what, what we did, uh, was we had the folks out in the fire hall. Uh, we have used the precautions of gloves and masks. Ms. Dennis has bought a thermometer. She's checked, taken temps, including mine, when everyone comes in. Uh, and we're moving things as quickly as we can. As the heat continues to build, it, it will be less comfortable for everyone. And we have fans. They're doing the best we can to comport with the distancing. Um, but I think it's going well, and I give her a lot of credit for all the things she's done to kinda, kinda keep us, uh, as safe as we can be and at the same time, uh, allow access to the courts for, for our folks. We've now had two terms of city court, and we've caught back up. In other words, the two terms that we continued, uh, postponed have now been accounted for. So, we're back on, back on track in terms of having all of our, uh, dockets in, in their regular order. Um, are there any questions about that or any, anything I could address on that front?
Anybody got any questions from Matt?
No, I don't.
I think it's worked. I'll have to say, I think it's worked very well, and I echo what he said about Terry. He put a lot of thought and all that into it.
You brought the good work, man.
Well, I appreciate you saying that, and it lends itself to my next, uh, topic, and that is, uh, as you guys may recall, you appointed me in two-year terms, and I am, uh, finishing up my, I think, I think it to be the sixth term. I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. I think it's twelve years. And, uh, I would humbly come before you asking for, uh, your consideration as, uh, for reappointment for another two-year term as the municipal judge.
I would make the motion that we appoint Matt Eas, to the, uh, I second the motion.
I don't think any discussions. So, everybody in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Well, you've got it, Matt Eas.
I ain't got it, but I would've, I would've definitely voted yes.
Well, thank you, Jerry.
I, I think he does a real good job.
Don't brag on him too much.
Yeah, if he gets the big. I know we take so much of that, right? I, I do, I do appreciate the vote of confidence, and I, and I thank you for, uh, kind words. Yes, sir. That's all I have to say, Mayor.
Thank you.
Reason I said to Terry there, man, I didn't, I wasn't hoping you wouldn't ask for a raise.
Go ahead and lock me in at current rate, huh?
Well, I was trying to get it one of them. Uh, okay, let me backtrack a little bit. I forgot. We need a, we need a head count for the minutes and all. Uh, I'll call your name, either say yeah or something. Uh, Gary Randolph?
Yeah.
Uh, Roger Agnew? Roger Agnew?
What else?
Okay, he ain't here.
Bobby was there a while ago.
Well, he ain't now. He ain't, he ain't. Bobby Blue?
Where is it?
Uh, Manoel? He's not here. Jerry Gann?
Here.
Phillip Fr- Phillip Fr- Phillip Gerson?
Here, here.
Phillip's here? Okay. Okay. Jerry Hester, you here?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm trying to call.
All right, uh, I'm gonna, reminder, the election is, uh, the election, not the election, I'm sorry. The qualifying is tomorrow, starts tomorrow, and it's fifty dollars to qualify. If anybody's interested in doing it, or you can tell people, they oughta know it. But it starts tomorrow and ends the twenty-first, am I right? Five o'clock on the twenty-first. Okay, uh, any questions on that?
No.
Okay, the school tax, the, all the schools, it's, uh, July seventeenth through the nineteenth. That's when there's no tax, right?
Tax holiday, yeah.
Tax holiday, I'm sorry. Yeah, I had it wrote down here, but it didn't say holiday. So, that's July seventeenth through the nineteenth, if anybody asked.
Okay.
And, uh, we need to, uh, Zane, we got a message from Zane. Most people got it today, I guess, but they're wanting to do, redo the doors at the gym. And the total price seems, is twelve thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And Zane said the whole advisory board voted for it, and they've been there since nineteen sixty-nine or seventy, and they probably do need it done. But we need to vote on to do that. Anybody wants to make a vote?
They discussed.
I'd like to, I would like to ask a question, Matt.
All right.
I'm not, I'm not saying off, I'm not, Matt, I'm not saying I'm against this, but when are we gonna draw the line on spending money that the county should take care of? You know, I mean, we do, we already done a lot, you know? And I understand the county has done well this year financially also, and it can't put up doors on the gymnasium. I mean, that's a vital part of the maintenance, the buildings and everything. Have you talked to anybody about that?
Yeah, I talked to them before about it, but this is brought from the advisory board that handles the money that they get. And there's, there, there, these doors on the gym, and they're asking to do it, and they got a good bit of money in the reserve account. So, I think it's just benefiting the kids to do this myself.
Well, it is, it is, Max, but, but, uh, the county should, county should do that. Uh, I mean, it's their building, and, uh, they're protecting their investment there by...
Well, we've, uh, we've bought, we've bought one more and stuff like that, and know their, their football field, that serves to, the whole thing is there.
I mean, we spend a lot, uh, but, uh, has, has the county said no?
I don't, I, there ain't nobody to ask. I don't know where they asked it yet, you know?
Well, I think we need to ask them. Thing, that was, that was my next question, Gis. Anybody ask them to replace the doors? What's your thoughts, Bobby?
Certainly, I, I, you know, we certainly prefer that the county pay for those items. My understanding, there is, I was in the process of taking the Zane, but my understanding in that, you know, is that they, they have capital improvement projects going out two or three years, and this item is not on that capital improvement project list, and, and so, and it has, it's been asked for many, many, many times, that they've not, they've not put it on the capital improvement project list. So, whether or not, you know, I, I think we could, I, we can ask, certainly, but I think, in my opinion, I think they're probably gonna say no. I'm not saying that's the right thing. I'm just saying that's probably what they're gonna do, because it, it's, they're functional, they're just not in good shape, if that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah. I haven't got any problem with the doors being repaired or replaced, either one, but, uh, I do know that, uh, the last, uh, person we had sitting on the council paved all the parking lot with monies from, from the sales of timber, and the county just paved those streets behind there, District Five. I don't think the, the school system paid for that, did they?
For what, Jerry?
The paving.
You talking about that, you talking about that paving in front of the elementary school?
Don't buy, yeah, that, and by.
The county paid for that.
That's what I'm talking about. County's, was it county school system, or was it Marion County District Five?
Uh, the Marion County School System paid for it.
Okay.
Hey, Matt, Matt.
They got, they, they got a grant for it.
Max?
Yeah.
Hey, this is Silas at the high school here. Hey, I, I, I just wanna say, uh, you know, this year, uh, between us and elementary school, the county paid fifty thousand dollars for the paving that went on, and we're also getting air in the high school gym. And now, my understanding was on the gym doors, like Bobby said, it's been asked for many times, and it's, you know, it's not ever been part of their, uh, their plan. You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
So, the, the gym doors, to me, are in, you know, in bad shape. Last year, I replaced two or three panes, but you can go press on the glass, and, you know, it, it, the, the, uh, the stuff that holds the glass in is not, it won't stay in there, in other words.
Yeah.
So, uh, you know, I know that in, in times past, y'all have bought doors, maybe for the lunchroom or something, ones that had a smaller glass. These doors will have smaller glass inserts, 'cause the ones that we have now have, uh, you know, really large glass at the top of it.
And those, those, those glass, uh, panes also have the cross-sections, the little mesh in them, in those doors, don't they?
Yeah.
Uh, those are, those are very, those can be very, very dangerous. If someone were to put their hands through that, that's gonna completely slice their hand up.
Uh, let, let me, let me say something on that, though. I think they was asked, uh, I think Zane, he's over this advisory board, or the reserve board, and, uh, I think they was asking, they'll repair them, but they will not replace them, is my understanding.
Okay.
Is that your understanding, Silas?
Yes.
Where's the product?
That's what, that's what Zane says, and, and I, I believe him. I believe that's probably the case. They might repair them, but them does look bad. I mean, they look tough.
And Silas, thank you for coming to see him there on, on the information
Yes.
you just gave, 'cause we was not aware, you know, as a council, we haven't been advised of anything, just like you talking about, it's going up there.
Right.
Eric and did all that, so
Yeah.
I guess we need to start asking questions, and maybe, maybe you can keep us informed of what's going on.
Yeah, I'd be glad to. Uh, like I said, though, they, they have, uh, they, you know, they're doing work here. We just got a new, uh, they put a new metal roof on the old home building. Uh,
Yes.
I guess that was two weeks ago. They paid for that, so, um, I'm not saying they wouldn't eventually do it, but I think like Matt said, they just, they repair it instead of upgrading them. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Well, that, that sounds totally different than what we, uh, first thought, Captain.
Yeah, and I think typically in an, in, in person meeting, y'all, we will, we will get to answer these, ask these questions of Zane and the advisory board and, and Mr. Silas. I, I think having it over the phone like this, sometimes we don't get all, uh, certainly don't get the information that we need, but I, I'll, I'll go ahead and move that we, uh, take the money out of the, out of the discretionary fund to go ahead and pay for these doors and get these things replaced.
Well, I would second that.
Uh, you're a second on it?
I second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. No, no, I'm sorry. Okay. Say something to your polls, anyhow. All right, I'm glad we got that, now. Let's see, what else, I gotta, I gotta. Uh, got to go, what else we got back in, huh? And they've got, their reserve has got some money to help them with, I'll tell you. So, yeah, but, yeah, I don't know where y'all was at the fireworks the other night or not, but it rained right before, just like usual on Fourth of July. And Mayfest, both of them is rainy days, I reckon, but, but Deer Valley built us that stage. If y'all saw it, it's really nice. It really is. And I'm trying to figure some way to store it where we won't just leave it out in the weather all the time. Come front of it, because it is nice. I mean, but I wanna give credit to Deer Valley, all I can. Now, they even do it the other night, but it rained, and Ken Speaker and all got, or something got a little wet there, and they had to quit, quit, but it, it's real nice.
Yeah, Ken, Ken said it was really, really nice. He, he said you couldn't have beat it.
Well, well, but anyhow, I just wanted y'all to know that we'll help. That'll save us money too a lot. When it gets down to Mayfest and Fourth of July, or any, any event we have, it's gonna save us a lot of money, so I wanna take care of it. And I'm trying to figure a way. It's taller than I thought it'd be, and, uh, I'm looking at these, uh, carports things, that they can build something real nice for us to put it under. And, uh, but I'm looking at that, and I, I went down and talked to, uh, Wood Perfect, and, uh, anything but probably the crystal lumber, they'll let us, they'll give us some lumber if we wanna build it out of lumber. And, you know.
I'll, uh, I'm gonna pass on a suggestion that was just made to me. I don't know if he wants to take credit for it, but, uh, uh, Judge Will Duke suggested maybe looking at, uh, Tom Bigby. They, they've got some storage there that they're not utilizing, and, um, I mean, would it hurt to?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to, I'm gonna talk to the post here on that, 'cause I don't know exactly what they got stored in there, but he'll tell me.
Uh, they got, they got plenty of room over there. I would, I would suggest, you know, I think that's a good suggestion. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do, too, but you, you've got to have, uh, it's gotta be so tall. It gotta be probably at least eighteen feet tall. That's pretty big. I don't know if they, they got a door over that tall, but, uh, well, I'm gonna find out. We started looking at it the other day, and I'm gonna go get with Steve and see, you know.
Okay. And I will say, I, I want to say two things, two things about, uh, this past weekend real quick, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Friday, Friday night, we had our, our race for kind of workshop that we have every year, and we, we kept it low-key purposely, and, uh, we took all the precautions we needed to for COVID, and it, it went off really without a hitch, and people kept us really safe. I wanna thank the, the fire department and the police department for all their help. Uh, they, they kept us safe, and we met, we never had a problem. We had a ton of, ton of, really great volunteers that, that helped us, and, and, um, we, you know, it just went well, and, and we didn't, we didn't, we just, we did not ask our, our sponsors this year to, uh, donate, but they still did in many cases. We, uh, it ended up clearing over seven thousand dollars for kind of workshops. So, that's, that's gonna help with the surplus that we already had in there. That's gonna really help for this year. Uh, so I wanted to tell you guys, I appreciated the, the use of our police department to help keep us safe. And then the second thing was, for the fireworks, Heather and I and Ava went and, uh, walked around a little bit and noticed that, you know, everybody seemed to be really staying with their own groups, and I, I did not see any issues with people clustering together. I thought it was really safe, and I thought it went off really, really well. Uh, it was a little slow with people coming in there, but when they figured out the rain was gonna hold off for the fireworks, they, they piled in there pretty quickly.
Thank you, Bobby. Okay, let's see, we got anyone else? Yeah, one more, one more thing.
Okay.
The land that we talked about last meeting, said that somebody has to put storage buildings on behind a shop. It sure used to be her shop down there. We got a eighty by two hundred feet, and, uh, Kevin McDaniel was wanting to buy it and put in a detail shop, put a building on it and put a detail shop in. Y'all will sell it for that?
But, so what happened with the, the, what happened with the storage buildings?
Well, they voted not to sell it for storage buildings. Or they said not to.
Okay.
I thought it was a pretty good idea, but people ain't piece of no.
Let us think about it, uh, till it's next meeting.
Yeah, y'all think about it the next week, well, I mean, I think it's been, I don't know about Jerry. Jerry?
Yeah.
Yes. Hey, I, Jerry Hester?
Yeah.
I, uh, since I brought that up, I just got to thinking, we turned to, fuck, somebody down, said we didn't wanna sell it to him for that. Is that legal?
Yeah, I, sure, I am, you.
But I mean, now we, now we can turn around and sell it to somebody else.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
You know, as long as you sell it at fair market value, I mean, you're, you're entitled to choose what goes there, 'cause.
Yeah, I thought, oh, but I was, I just wanted to make sure on that, so I don't get no trouble on that.
I mean, I wouldn't give, I wouldn't give it to him or anything.
No. I think it's.
Are you going to, going to have a bunch of cars parked around it?
I wouldn't think so on a detail shop. I wouldn't think so, but now, I, I can ask him, find out. We'll hold it off to the next meeting and see.
Yeah, and I, I would also ask, uh, that we ask him for a business plan around it as well, because, and, you know, we'd like to know specifically what he's on the, what he's on the build there and, and what his plans are, and
Okay.
storage of those vehi- storage of vehicles and those kinds of things, I think is important, because he does have a lot of vehicles out there right now.
Yeah, he does, yeah. Yeah, I'm telling you, I just think, we're looking at something that's taxable income. You're only looking at labor, that's, that's gonna provide no income for the city. We need taxable income out of that piece of property.
Uh, yeah, I, I agree, but we need to get some things going if we can, too, I think. Now, I don't know. But it's just, we'll just think about it the next meeting, and we'll talk about it then.
On, on the bill, on the, uh, they, uh, we have a perfect place to store that thing inside. I think a wrecker would be able to move it, uh, the backhoe deal. Uh, my, my understanding is they saw that little problem getting back again because of wires, but with a wrecker, that thing could be parked inside the fire department up at the Holiday Inn. Only takes us two escort vehicle to get it up there.
It'd take something to get it up there, though, I figure. But I don't know, I don't know. There ain't nothing going on up there for sure.
Yeah, if it, if they could get it up there, that'd be a good place to store it.
Yeah, we got, well, you think, well, I don't want it tore up, I'm, I'm more than likely.
Oh, we don't want to tear it up, that's for sure. Well, you might, might, uh, check with some other people and see what they think.
I will. I'll, some, some important time, that, that fire station's got to be open. Yeah, I think it needs to be. I don't know how we can do it yet. I've been pondering on this for three years or four, and, and it needs to be done, but it takes a lot of money to do something like that. Uh, I just don't know, but, uh, let's think about that, too, a little bit.
Well, uh, uh, the road up to the Holiday Inn looks a whole lot nicer. Uh, boy's done a good job of cleaning the, uh, dirt and stuff up, uh.
Yeah, we'll probably have to clean again, 'cause they gonna make some more come down, I guess.
Yeah.
But if we, uh, State man called the other day, he was up there, he still says that has nothing to do with them, but he suggested, uh, our whole hillside is taking a lot of money to fix, I'm telling you, but we may have to put some rock in it or something. I don't know yet.
Yeah.
I wish we could push that whole thing down that gully, gully down there. That hole.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what should've been done, start with, I guess. I don't know. But anyhow, I appreciate y'all meeting, and anybody got any, just clicking, they want to ask for it?
Well, Bobby brought up something there a while ago, you know, we pretty much, uh, likely is running, and we just been out in the public with opening up new stores, and our, our, we are shoulder to shoulder opening up new businesses, so I feel like I would like to make motion that we start meeting in a house again.
I believe when you get right down to it, that's my call, but I don't know.
Well.
But I got a proclamation from the Secretary of State, and they, and the governor's extending this page to September the ninth, and she's recommended that people, nonprofit organizations and the government's people meet on the telephone, is what she's recommending. I can give you a copy of this if you want it, but
I don't want it.
But, uh, I don't, I mean, I don't see the, I, I mean, I, we can get just about as much done here, unless we got something sure enough big, we'll, we'll make somewhere. We met twice outside, and this was just after overtime. I don't know what it's called. I don't know what it's called. The traffic was so bad, it got everybody shook up for a while. But, you know, but this thing is not over, but I know we shot the fireworks, and like Bobby said, we kinda talked to people around and coming in and all, and asked them to be clear of each other and all that, but, uh, we had a lot of people working, too, trying to get it to be successful. And if it hadn't been, well, the rain is still successful, but it would've been if it rained, I guess. We had pretty good going, but anyhow, I don't know. Uh, we'll think about it.
And Mayor, Matt, this is, uh, Mr. Welley from the elementary school, and I just wanna say thank you, guys, for what you do, and thanks again for the, the check this time, too. That was a, a real good one.
Thank you, sir. Very good.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Okay, got it.
Hey, Max?
It's home, man, yeah.
Listen, Manel, I come in like, did y'all, uh, talk about the doors at the gym?
No, we not gonna do it, we just gonna burn the gym down.
I'm not kidding, but you probably done it last time.
We done, hey, Manel, we done, we done done it, I was kidding.
Okay.
I was just...
I, I just, I just, I was just making sure.
We voted to do it.
Yeah.
The whole, the whole twelve floor?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna do it. I know, I was kidding, I'm crazy, I don't know what. Anything else?
Right. I make a motion, we adjourn.
You're a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Say aye. Leave it there, Silas.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/fortyninecountynewsTV.